Just a reminder, I know everything else is going on over in a COVID is still happening, the pandemic, and it's been a tough year for many. But just a reminder that Movember is a fundraising movement in support of men's health, and monies from this charity go to look after prostate cancer, testicular cancer, and men's mental health and suicide prevention. So if you can find it in your hearts as we finish up, Movember, to put some money towards men's health, it would be very much appreciated. And you know, if you're looking for a link to it, you can find it on my social media. And then, just a reminder for everybody, you know, my team won yesterday, so I could support my Patriots mask today. But just, we have to wear them everywhere now. If you are not in your house, and you're out in public, you should keep your mask on. Something I have to keep reminding myself is to make sure I put it on during drive-throughs as well. Wearing your mask helps keep yourself safe. More importantly, it helps keep others safe and make them feel comfortable. Wash your hands. Try not to touch your face. Be healthy, St. John. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And I have, I think, supported the last couple of years and hadn't. So I'm just on my laptop making my donation on the last day. So thanks for the reminder. Anyone else? Thank you, councillor Hickie.
Thank you, your worship, and thanks to councillor Sullivan for the reminder, the COVID-19 reminders, and of course, Movember as well. On the COVID-19 subject, you know, we've had a certainly in a challenging period now in St. John than we were in our last meeting. But I just wanted to remind folks to continue to take the, take the measures to keep people safe and to keep everyone else safe. And you know, I've heard continuous conversation around COVID fatigue, people not respecting the rules as much just because it's, it's dragged on and the mental and physical wear that that's taking. So I really encourage you to make sure that you're making sure you're doing, doing your due diligence to keep your upkeep on your, both your physical and mental health throughout the orange phase even more so, even more so than normal. I went for a nice long bike ride out to Laurinville on the weekend, and that was a major repair for me. I also just wanted to mention, just had a couple of notes from a few community members, in terms of event cancellations, and certainly the one, the one that I wanted to mention was our Saturday winter market. It was supposed to be our students' day last Saturday, but was unfortunately canceled because of, because of our entrance into orange phase. I just wanted to give a shout out to St. John Transit for being prepared, the vendors who were prepared, especially the St. John newcomers center for their RSCPs and their, their work in there as well. The partners for the event were the YMCA Newcomer Connections, Prude, the St. John Newcomer Center, and as well as the City of St. John. So hoping to get that event rescheduled and everyone pay attention to it, but just wanted to highlight that. And that's all for me. Thank you very much, your worship.
Okay, thank you very much. I didn't, I don't think I saw anyone else. I just wanted to, to quickly just speak to COVID, I guess, myself. I did, I have shared a bit over the last, I think I'm in my ninth or 10th day in isolation. It's, it's horrible. Just want to say thank you to all the frontline folks and the work they're doing. I've called 811, I've called Public Health, I've last night had my second COVID test. I'm, I'm swiping and swiping and swiping to, to see if my results are in yet. And just to practice, as you were hinting at, I think councillor Hickie, patience with each other. It's been a difficult time. Patience with each other, kindness, and remembering the frontline workers and all the work that they're doing, all the, our city staff, you know, working through this. It's, can, can be complicated at times. The answers folks want instantaneously, and it is the frontline workers that have done an amazing job through this thus far. And I really wanted to say thank you to them for all the work that, that they've been doing through it. So let's just be patient as we work through orange and hopefully kick COVID to the, to the curb in the, in the new year. So, okay, thank you. Next item, common clerk.
Yes, your worship. The next item is a presentation, and it's for the St. John Airport, item 8.1 on your agenda, and Commissioner Hamilton will be providing an introduction.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hamilton. Over to you.
Good evening, your worship and members of council. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce Mr. Derek Stanford, the CEO of the St. John Airport. No doubt that the St. John Airport is certainly a vital transportation link and an important driver for our economic recovery of the, of the region from the ongoing effects of the pandemic. We are pleased this evening to have Mr. Stanford join us to brief council on their efforts to ensure the region continues to have a safe and affordable access to air transportation. With that introduction, I would hand things over to Mr. Stanford.
Great. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you very much, your worship. Thanks to council members for the invitation today. I've got a brief presentation that I'll take you through, and I've committed to being as brief as possible. So anyhow, I've got the first slide up there, so maybe we can just go to the second slide. So essentially, a view from 10,000 feet, you know, around the world, no surprise, airlines and airports are reacting to a decline in global air travel as a result of COVID-19. While here in St. John, you know, we've seen the return of daily service, as some of you may or may not know, the St. John Airport was without any commercial service for almost 90 days this past April, May, and most of June. Our airline partners continue to assess the viability of routes across the country. So we're down to just Air Canada once a day to Montreal, and we're very grateful to have that. But if you recall, prior to the pandemic, the St. John Airport had order on a daily service. We had just announced we'd be the launching Flair Airlines in June, and we typically would have Sunwing going to Cuba throughout the winter months. So on a daily schedule, we would have about 17 flights a day. You may also recall that in early June, Air Canada suspended permanently all of the routes to Halifax through, through Atlantic Canada, and, and also many of the routes to Ottawa as well. So the, the region has certainly been dealt some devastating blows with regards to, with throughout air connectivity for the, for the province and the region. So again, we can't assume we won't be affected by future service disruptions as well. We came literally within hours a few weeks ago of losing our sole daily flight to Montreal until Minister Garno, the Minister of Transport, stepped in and began negotiations with, with Air Canada to ensure that we would remain connected to the network. So next slide, please. The St. John Airport has been self-sustaining and profitable since it was privatized in 1999. In the last few years, we've had some unprecedented growth, and we were even the fastest growing airport in Atlantic Canada for a few years in a row. We're poised to continue serving all of Southern New Brunswick's businesses and leisure travel needs once the public health restrictions are lifted. As you may know, we're a not-for-profit authority owned by the community. We are user-funded until 1920, until 2019, when our airport modernization project was eligible for some new federal funding. We had never received a penny in public funding. And sometimes people forget that, and they think the airports are still part of the federal government, but they were privatized in 1999, and our corporate structure is exactly the same as Moncton or Fredericton, Vancouver, Toronto, Ottawa, Montreal. Again, we're a non-share capital, not-for-profit corporation that's basically owned by the community. We pay rent to the federal government for the facility, but we operate as a private business. Next slide. Airports wield heavy influence on the growth of cities and industries. Airports shape business location and urban development in the 21st century as much as highway did, highways did in the 20th century, or railroads did in the 19th century, and seaports in the 18th century. Airports help propel regional economic prosperity. What's more, airports have a stronger connection to regional growth than universities, high-tech industry, and high-scale talent. YSJ's operations provide access to the global economy via daily flights and contribute more than $60 million to our area's economic output. In fact, in 2019, our economic impact was over $19 million with the completion of the St. John Airport airfield modernization project. We're a hub of activity and a profitable anchor institution in our region alongside our university, our hospital, and the many global brands that are headquartered here in St. John. Next slide, please. YSJ is critical to Southern New Brunswick's economic recovery and growth. We know our ability to facilitate travel to and from our region has a direct positive impact on business attraction, retention and growth, tourism recovery and growth, population growth, and newcomer attraction and retention, and in my opinion, the overall quality of life about living in St. John. Next slide, please. We're consulting with a broad variety of business sectors on the impact reduced, the impact of reduced service access would have in our region's economic recovery and our return to growth. So far, we're hearing that employers anticipate challenges filling highly skilled positions. As an example, 80% of New Brunswick tech executives believe access to air is key to recruitment and growth, the source from tech impact. Our unique value proposition to remote workers will be compromised. A lot of what makes living in St. John amazing is that it's a 15-minute drive to your airport, and you can work in the oil fields out west or in the Yukon and still enjoy the high-quality life that living in St. John presents. Hotels will see a decline in the range of 20% occupancy representing a $7.4 million reduction in related revenue and an $18 million loss. The Algonquin Hotel, just a mere hour away, a $15 million regional asset, is dependent on meetings and conventions and having air access inside of one hour drive to the hotel. 65% of air arriving guests to the Algonquin arrive at YSJ. Business, business is seeking certainty in a challenging year. We understand the commitment to being here and, oops, sorry, I lost my slide there for a second. So the last slide then, so the, the one, what's on the horizon? How we can, how can we as a community support the airlines who serve us via YSJ? You can share what you've heard today regarding the impact that the airport has to our economy and our community. Consider the impacts on the initiatives and efforts you're leading, and help us continue strengthening our case. Urge the province to launch a testing program for arriving passengers at YSJ. And I'm pleased to say on this final bullet, urge your MP to support the notion of a financial support package for the Canadian aviation sector. Just moments ago, in Minister Freeland's fall economic statement, we did receive word that the airport community across Canada will be receiving a financial package. Many thanks to Wayne Long for his hard efforts in echoing our sentiments in Ottawa. But we still are hopeful that Transport Canada will negotiate something for our airline partners as well, as we can't have airports without airlines. And your worship, that's the entirety of my presentation this evening. I can take questions now or later, or both now and later.
Okay, so why don't we, if we stop sharing, we'll, we'll just see if there are any questions. And then after this item, council will, I'll ask you to pull up the other item with regards to the letter of support. So are there any questions for Derek? Okay, maybe I'll save my comment. Sorry, deputy mayor, go ahead. You're muted, deputy. We can't hear you there.
We just wanted to say thank you for coming in, Derek. We discussed it at our growth committee meeting a few weeks ago now, and we are very concerned about business at the St. John Airport and hope that it's great news, of course, that the federal government has given you some relief for funding. And if there's anything we can do at all, we'd be very pleased to help you, I'm sure, through the mayor and all of our efforts. Because we, we were, you know, we're very concerned for, you know, to keep the airport going. We do have three airports in New Brunswick, and we want to make sure that they're all operating and having good success. So thank you again for your information that you gave us, and if there's anything we can do, we'd appreciate hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to deal with a letter here in an upcoming item, but I just, again, thank you to you, Derek, for your leadership. But I know with you is a, is a board of directors as well, that you've all been challenged. The airline industry has been challenged like many other industries, you know, really since March, as you've seen your, your passenger traffic plummet and your flights plummet. So I think for me, really, this is a conversation about getting through the next number of months and then restoring and rebuilding the momentum that you've brought and your board over the last few years to, to YSJ, having done an amazing job, and how vitally important it is for the, the growth vision that we have here for the Greater St. John region of being one of the strongest economic hubs in, in, in all of Atlantic Canada, and how critically important it is that the, the airport is at the center of that, whether it be for the global business leaders that we have here, Irving Oil, JDI, Cook Aquaculture, for the tech sector, for the, the great initiatives that we see in the future of the port, for the university, for business travel, for tourism, and events, and conference travel. Every one of those conversations has YSJ, your airport, in the middle of that. And it's just vitally, vitally critical to, to this region and our economic hub of Greater St. John to flourish. It doesn't happen without YSJ, in my opinion. So I think that's why we wanted to hear from you. We thank you for your leadership. Great to hear that things are advancing with the federal government, and, and I didn't see any other hand. So perhaps we'll receive and file this report, and then we'll, we'll move right into the letter. And we'd ask you to stay, Derek, on the line with us for a few minutes. Council, I didn't see any other hand, so maybe receive and file. Thank you. Thank you, deputy and councillor Riordan. Thank you for seconding that. On that question, all those in favor? Thank you. Anyone contrary minded? Okay, thank you. Next item, common clerk. If we could move up, I think it was 16-1, the letter.
Yes, your worship, that's correct. So a letter was distributed and will be added on as part of the supplemental agenda items, but it was distributed to council. And it's, it has a recommendation within it that the mayor send a letter to the Minister of Transportation in support of the St. John Airport that was attached to the report.
Okay, thank you. Can, just, just before we move there, council, can we, can we, city manager, I think Mr. Dobelstein was going to speak to this for a few minutes?
That's correct, your worship. Mr. Dobelstein will introduce this, this particular staff report.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Just wanted to, I know he's done a lot of work on this file with Mr. Stanford. So over to you, Mr. Dobelstein.
Good evening, your worship and councillors. What you have before you is a letter of support from council to the St. John Airport. As Mr. Stanford alluded to, there's been some issues with the air sector across Canada, obviously as a result of COVID, and our own airport is not immune to this. So the timing of this, this was written, obviously, last week in consultation with the St. John Airport and the mayor's office. And a lot of things have happened in between then and now, but the matter remains the same. We're calling, we're recommending certainly the city's position is that there is operational funding that is provided to the St. John Airport to sustain it, particularly until the air sector returns to normal. We are also calling for support to our airlines, in particular so that air service is sustained in St. John. Mr. Stanford alluded to the fact that there was sort of a close call a short while ago before Minister Garnell intervened, and we want to make sure that that stays the same and in fact that service has increased. And finally, also, the letters is going to the province, our recommendations goes to the province in order to support safe piloting of rapid testing for COVID at our airports, in order to allow our tourism sector to start rebounding and allow visitors to start coming in more frequently. So obviously, we're encouraging this to be done safely and, and recommending that the province takes the steps it needs to take without us making recommendations on health, but we would like to see this piloted. So those are the three main points, and that is the letter that we're recommending council endorse.
Okay, everybody, thank you. Just before I ask for a mover, council, I think the recommendation covers and gives latitude to, to the, the letter being signed by the mayor, but we will, we will just tweak that letter slightly to reflect the most recent information that we, we have. And I think that the recommendation gives the latitude to the mayor's office to, to do that, and we will send that letter off. So thank you. Do we have a mover and a second, please? Thank you. Councillor Hickie moved and seconded by the deputy. Thank you. And now questions, comments on this particular item, if any? Okay, thank you. Oh, councillor Hickie, go ahead.
Just a quick one, your worship. I won't belabor it for too long because I don't know how on topic it is. But I'm just wondering, is there an understanding from the provincial government as to what the delay in, in-person testing is in, in, in the airports? Is there any understanding as to where, as to where they are?
Thank you.
And why we're being put to this point?
Sure, thank you. Perhaps, Mr. Stanford, can you, I'm, I'm not aware certainly, Mr. Stanford, have you had any conversations?
Yeah, I mean, the, the airports of New Brunswick have had numerous conversations with the province on launching some form, and I'm not even calling it rapid testing anymore, just a testing program within our airports as a way to not, not eliminate 14-day isolations or not, you know, loosen up the restrictions to come to our province, but as a way to blend science along with good practices and, and start to provide a little bit of a lift on the, on the, you know, very strict protocols we have in New Brunswick. Again, not preaching to eliminate or, or get rid of 14-day isolations just yet. But so we had some, we had some good progress. And then the, I guess, the second wave, if you will, if you want to call it, reared its head a few weeks ago, and our progress has slowed considerably with the province. So we are hoping to get back to the table with the province to understand how we can work together in piloting a testing program at New Brunswick's airports.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Stanford.
Okay, great, thank you. I didn't see any other hands. Thank you. A couple of thank yous. Thank you to you again, Derek, for all the, the leadership. I know you're on the, you know, the airport boards in the region. You've been collaborating. And you, you and I have, I had an opportunity a week and a half or two now, maybe council, to, to join Air Canada for a conference call to just hear directly from Air Canada. And it was a great eye-opener for me to better understand really what's at stake here, and that is the importance of a national and connected air, air, air system. And, you know, we take for, we used to take for granted prior to March, jump, jump onto a plane at YSJ and get off the plane wherever we want to be anywhere in the globe. But if those national carriers are not there, that things are going to be much more different. So obviously, just to repeat it, because I think it bears repeating, the economic impact of over $90 million, 650 direct and indirect jobs, passenger levels pre-COVID up to 280,000 passenger segments a year and growing. And as I said, fitting in to our growth agenda, interwoven in that is the movement of people and goods back and forth. And obviously, as, as you said, Derek, you know, plays the same kind of vital role that, you know, many of the other forms by, by, by port or by boat or ship, by, by, by highway system and so on and so forth. So we'll send the letter off, council, and work with the other levels of government to, you know, to, we talk about vaccines in 2021 and coming out of COVID, and we want to make sure that our partner in the St. John Airport is standing there right beside us with flights coming in so we can get back to some level of new normal. So, okay, well, thank you very much. I'll call the question then in favor of this letter. All those in favor? Thank you. And anyone contrary minded? So, okay, that's unanimous vote of support for the letter and for the work you're doing, Derek. Thank you very much. And to Mr. You, Mr. Dobelstein, thank you for the work you're doing as well. Okay, take care. Next item, common clerk.
Yes, your worship. There's another presentation on the agenda, item 8.2, and Commissioner Hamilton will provide an introduction to this.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Over to you.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce Ms. Nancy Tissington, who's the executive director of Uptown St. John. She oversees the operations of the Business Improvement Association that's made up of more than 550 businesses in the uptown area and plays an important role in the marketing and beautification of the city's central business district. We're pleased to have her join us this evening to provide an overview of the work of the BIA and their programs, which are key to the vibrancy of our uptown. And with that as an introduction, I'll turn things over to Ms. Tissington.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, your worship and council, city manager and staff. Thank you for providing this opportunity to share the Uptown St. John primary mandate and our pillars. And I'm just going to run through this quick presentation for you, and you'll see the highlights and the headlines of which, which pillar I'm speaking of. Bear with me here as I get this new technology.
There we go.
I think we have it. Perhaps. There we go. So you've often heard us talk about just the BIA, and the BIA is actually an acronym that's for Business Improvement Association. The BIA Act enables businesses in a defined area to form a Business Improvement Association. Uptown St. John was incorporated back in 1976, and the Uptown Business Improvement Area was formalized in 1985 as a BIA. Prior to this, we were called a Central Business District. Our funding comes from a levy applied to provincial property taxes on commercial buildings, which the province collects on our behalf. The area rate for the uptown is set at 16 cents for every $100 of the assessed value of a property. This value has remained constant for the last 20 years. We can, through legislation, make that to 20 cents, but there has not been an appetite to move that. We have been growing over the last number of years, and we see usually a 1.2 to 1.3% increase. In New Brunswick, there are 26 BIAs that represent the main streets and the city centers of the province. Our board of directors includes 11 members of our association and one city councillor. This evening, I'll introduce councillor Donna Riordan at 2014. I was, since I've started, I think Donna's been on this board for quite some time. We have a new board member who is also a city staff, and that's senior level staff, Ian Fogan. The Uptown BIA encompasses about 26 blocks bordered by Water Street, Duke Street, Charlotte, and Station Streets. The BIA represents an estimated 550 businesses, 85 restaurants and pubs, and over 45 retailers. Uptown St. John and our members, are members of the Downtowns New Brunswick, the Downtowns Atlantic Canada, and the International Downtowns Association. We advocate on behalf of our members at the municipal, provincial, and federal levels. For example, we advocated for the neighborhood plan a few years ago and committed to pursuing the priorities outlined by that plan. We are the urban champions that provide solutions needed to address the issues of the day. We pride ourselves in our ability to quickly pivot and to adjust the changing needs of our businesses and to support growth in our region. So jumping in now to our pillars. Enhancing public spaces in the BIA through beautification projects is one of the top priorities of the association. Recently, we undertook a tree lighting program on, program on our main streets, and you'll notice on King Street and Prince William Street that we have the trees wrapped. This place making, making project makes our streets safer, more welcoming, and instills pride of place in our community as a whole. We also partner with St. John Energy to provide the holiday lighting that just would have went up just the past week and maintenance that's up that, and keeps the maintenance updated. Throughout the year, we decorate the uptown core with a variety of seasonal banners and work with the community groups to promote local events. We've seen a lot less of those this past summer, but normally you would see Buskers Festival and things from the United Way on those banners. But this year, we have just had some art used. Stay tuned for a bright colorful banner installation for spring 2021. Uptown St. John has invested heavily in keeping the streets of our uptown clean and safe over the past few years. Our dedicated uptown clean crew implements all of our cleaning programs. In 2018, the association purchased a sidewalk litter vacuum to reduce the number of cigarette butts and garbage in the pedestrian areas. In 2019, we purchased a pressure washer, which we use to clean the sidewalks, remove graffiti, and assist businesses with facade maintenance, such as cleaning their awnings or just their windows when called upon. You'll see the litter vacuum, a picture up here that we purchased a couple of years ago. We do at least a minimum of 15 hours of work on the city streets, on the sidewalks, not the streets. We leave that to the city. We actually do this just on the sidewalks. Very effective machine, and we're happy with our, with our service provider on this as well. And we're happy with our, with our service provider on this as well. From June 1st to the end of October, we took over 12,000 pounds of garbage debris from the uptown streets and sidewalks. This would include, though, the weeds. And you'll see in the other picture to the far right, the weeds that we take out. We actually take those off to the dump and the compost. The tulip program on King Street is a partnership with Uptown St. John and the City of St. John, and has been in place for a number of years whereby the association purchases the tulips for King Street and city staff plant them in the fall. And I'm happy to say that the plant, the tulips are going to be seen again next spring. Lots of photo ops on those ones. In 2019, we also launched a sand and salt box program in partnership with the City of St. John. This pilot project was met with great enthusiasm from both the businesses and residential communities. We had eight sand and salt boxes that were strategically placed around the core, filled with sand and salt provided by the city, which the BIA distributes. This year, we have added an additional two boxes based on some requests at the top of King Street, which probably makes a whole lot of sense with the ice. We have also installed a cigarette, we've also installed cigarette butt stations around busy areas to reduce the littering of butts on city streets. This has helped significantly this year. You'll see them up where the Tim Hortons is, Brunswick Square, Jardine's Alley, sort of where people congregate. We've also placed around at least 18 dog bag dispensers on the poles around the area. And we keep those filled with the dog bags. Usually, about every two weeks, we have to fill those. But it's nice to see that people are using them. So having a clean place to visit, not only for, by our tourists, but our residents and patrons, is our goal, promoting growth and vibrancy in our uptown, which is why we do so much of this and this legislative for us to do this cleanliness in the clean and safe streets. We also organize an annual clean sweep each spring to engage the public, which provides, which brings out over 120 volunteers. We didn't do one this year, of course, but we had about 120, 20 volunteers come out last year. This past summer, the association did an analysis of renting a vehicle versus purchasing our own. We're happy to say we have our own vehicle that assists us with many of our public space projects. Most recently, our uptown, our uptown started Uptown in Your Town Delivery Service for the holidays whereby we are supporting our local small businesses by providing free delivery to their customers over the holidays. As of today, we hit our highest number with 15 parcels that went out into about a 25-kilometer radius from our city centers, supporting our local businesses. The lion's share of our budget is marketing initiatives. They encompass the bulk of our programming in the BIA. We align our budget initiatives with the assets of our membership. We do have a marketing committee that we've worked with quite closely to promote the growth and success, their growth and success. A few examples of our reoccurring projects include the Uptown Advantage Card, which you can purchase for $5, that gains you access to many product and service promotions. The Inside Uptown Residential Tour, which is an annual tour, giving a peek into our development and to many of our new developments uptown. And a lot of folks, this sells out actually usually by, by an hour or so. And we usually have about 100 people that come out. It actually helps them make, make a decision about moving uptown. And they're pleasantly surprised to see what's behind our facades and what's taking place with our developers. We also have an Uptown Holiday Wish Book, which is akin to the Sears Wish Book, which is an online interactive tool highlighting over 32 participating retailers. It was launched last week, so please check us out at uptownsj.com. We also had a lobster trail that identifies who has lobster for sale, Shop the Block event to boost retail in the springtime, to name a few more, and our ever-popular Uptown Dollars whereby we promote local buying. The association provides a discount twice a year of 20%. To date, we have provided over $125,000 back into the community since we created the program in 2018. You can buy Uptown Dollars at face value anytime, and most recently, you can do so on our website, on our website. Our signature Uptown Sparkles event draws crowds upwards of 60,000 to the city each year as we light up our streets for the holidays. Of course, this year, we have made it more of a season and have provided lights for our businesses to decorate their storefronts to bring our own sparkle, since we're not actually doing the one-night event in December. So watch for updates on the Window Wonderland Program. The lucky winner will walk away with a marketing package valued at, valued at over $1,000 they can use in 2021. Our largest restaurant initiatives are the Burger Week and Chop Chop. In this past year, of course, we did not do Burger Week in the spring, but it was a huge success in the fall when we, we rolled it out. It was a welcome sight to see a lot of St. Johners coming out and supporting our restaurants in this capacity. A dollar from every Chop Chop plate is donated to, donated to the Lunch Connection, a local program that feeds children in the neighboring schools. As a partner with the City of St. John with the newly adopted Neighborhood Plan, the BIA and the City of St. John coordinated one of the first priorities that was noted in the public engagement by purchasing 10 solar-powered compact trash receptacles. These receptacles were strategically placed in conjunction with the city's operation team to further keep our city clean. The receptacles are now stored in for the winter months, but we'll bring them back out in early spring. Annually, one of the successful grants of the BIA is the facade grant. Up to $1,000 or 50% of a project can be attained by enhancing the front-facing portion of a building from lighting to awnings to paint, or in this case, a full reface, exposing the building, bringing it back to its original facade. And you can see that there, that's actually Dr. Richter's building, and it's, it's just across from our offices on 17 Canterbury. Uptown St. John allocates $15,000 annually into this program. When COVID hit, we, as many others, quickly moved to remain supportive for our businesses. Our signature events could no longer happen, so we moved to what our businesses required. And at the time, they required PPE. This was not in their budget, they just didn't have it. Our Board of Directors reallocated funds of over $60,000 for businesses to access. Also, pivot in conducting business, we created an e-commerce grant to get business online during these challenging times. I want to thank the commitment of our Board of Directors, who are volunteers in our business community and work tirelessly to support our membership. They really understood when we brought this to them, that this is where we needed to pivot. Thank you, everyone. You can find us here. I want you to note that this hashtag #LiftUpLocalSJ has been gaining lots of follows. It's really important to not, if you can't buy, but you can always lift up and always be kind to, to those that you're interacting with in our retail and our restaurant and all of our sectors in the uptown. One other thing I'd like to note is that Uptown St. John is embarking on a three-year strategic plan, and we're working on that in 2021. We wish to work with the City of St. John in augmenting your goals as you move forward to growth, to provide growth to our city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tissington. That's an excellent presentation. I wondered if I could call on you, Counselor Riordan. I don't know if you wanted to make a few comments as we're kicking off, and then we'll, we'll open up the floor. Nancy, you're probably trying to.
I'm trying to.
Yeah, how to stop sharing, exactly, yeah.
If I could just stop sharing, that would be great, wouldn't it? Did I get it?
You got it.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Riordan, kick us off, yeah?
Thank you, your worship. I want to say thanks to Nancy for coming in. I find there's often a lot of confusion about the business improvement area of whether it is a city agency board committee, if it's supported by the city, or et cetera. So it's great to have all of that information. And I find that you just do the greatest amazing work, and it's always innovative, and it's always invigorating, I find. You know, it's, it's exciting, and it's interesting, and there's always something new coming. So the, I find the marketing has really been great as well. So, you know, it really does a great job. I own a building in the business improvement area, so I'm, I'm, I'm part of that whole group as well. And I feel like I am getting my money's worth with you at the helm there, Nancy. So it's, it's great to see and great to have you in. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Can't see, I don't see any hands up. Oh, thank you, Counselor Hickey, go ahead. Yep, go ahead, Counselor Hickey.
Thank you, your worship. Just a couple of questions for you, Nancy. For context, certainly Nancy has been a huge champion of our uptown, as is Claire, of which I frequently refer to as my uptown mom, and I'm quite proud of that. I guess, just a couple of questions for you, Nancy, if I can. Within the context of what we've gone through the last eight months or so with COVID, our needing to pivot, I think what you've proven is Uptown St. John's nimbleness and ability to react quickly to changing dynamics within, within the neighborhood, specifically to the uptown and to the BIA. I guess, and, and it's not necessarily a luxury that we always have from the, from the initial perspective, given the size of our organization and the legislative requirements and the bureaucratic duties that we have to uphold to do so. So we don't always have that nimbleness. So I guess my question to you is, how can we better effectively support you? And how can we move your mandate forward to support the BIA and to support what's happening uptown?
Thank you, your worship, through to the Counselor. What's really important is, the key word that you said is nimble. So what's, what's really important is to identify what's, what's coming. And of course, let's hope we don't have to do too many pandemic pivots, because that was exhausting, and still, it still is a little. But I will say, it's been challenging yet rewarding. I would have to say that communication is key between the municipality, our local government, and the BIA as being, we being that channeling through to the businesses. I think that the communication piece is the most important and integral part of us being successful together. We are one, we have the same goals as our municipality by bringing vibrancy, bringing growth to our region. So again, as I mentioned before, Counselor, it's really important that the strategic goals, and I do believe that Ian Fogan has highlighted, and the nice thing is he's on our board now, is that he's highlighted that they are going to be going through, you're going to be working on some strategic goals yourself. How can we come in and fill those gaps and not be that, but we can fill in the pace, the pieces that, that we are allowed to be nimble with? So I, I think that open communication, lots of transparency, and to let you know what our goals are, and of course, our goals are through the legislation. And then how nimble we can work to, to get to those goals and get to them successfully, not just with the businesses, but to our citizens that actually support our businesses in the uptown area and outer, and outer areas, because we're reaching those folks right now.
Well, thanks, thanks very much, Nancy. And I, all, all I would say as a conclusion, I don't, I don't expect a response or anything from it. But I just, I, I hope that we, as, as a city, can, can move towards that supporting aspect. You know, I often wonder if our efforts earlier in the summer and in the spring would have been better placed in your hands. But I'll, I'll leave it there, and thank you for the presentation. And thanks for the work you, you, you and your team continue to do.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. I didn't see any other hands. I'll just say a thanks to Nancy. You know, first of all, I, I have a question as to what's wrong with those other organizations, those downtown organizations, because I thought for sure you would have converted them all to uptown organizations by now. But anyway, all kidding aside, I do think of, I think, you know, I think you've done a, a great job of not only pivoting in the last while and, and, you know, we should always be striving to strengthen those relationships between the city and uptown St. John. But you play such a key role in those, those areas of concentration that you have. I think your, your uptown, your uptown crew has, has shown what two people can do is pretty phenomenal. Honestly, what they do with smiles on their faces, and, and they've done just a great job there. So I think, you know, continued partnership, working with you. And, and I think that, you know, through, I, I do, and I am very appreciative to see through these challenging times, a little bit of a renewed focus on local and buying local and even small, like, you know, you know, I'm not, you know, anyway, I'll leave out company names, right? But there's larger retailers that have people wrapped out along their building and down the back of their building. And there's those small retailers, boy, I'll tell you, making those sales on Monday and Tuesday and Thursdays and Saturdays makes the difference between paying rent or not and, and staying in business and getting through this really unprecedented time. So thank you for everything you're doing. And, and, you know, we look forward to continuing to work with you, Nancy. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And to your board as well. Thanks, Nancy. Okay, can I have a receiving file, please, folks? Thank you, Counselor Norton and Counselor Hickey, thank you. On the question, all those in favor? Thank you, anyone contrary-minded? Not seeing any. Thank you very much, Nancy. Okay, next item, common clerk?
Your worship, yes, next item is a consideration of a bylaw. And it's for the bylaw respecting fees for fire protection services in the City of St. John, item 10.1 on your agenda. And tonight, we'd be looking for third reading, which would be a reading in summary and then a reading by title, so two motions.
We have a mover by summary, Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Sullivan, thank you. And I'll call that question, oh, sorry, questions. Counselor Riordan, questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question. I'm just wondering, when I read through all that, now that we have it in print and it's in the bylaws, et cetera, are we bound by the fee schedule that's in there? Or can that be increased over time through whatever or not? And can we add anything to that? Or would it have to be added separately? I was thinking about, a lot of that is a consequence of, of issues with fire. But there's also the prevention side that we could be maybe charging for as well.
City manager wanted to jump in there?
Yeah, the short answer is, these are bylaws, and therefore, if we were to make changes, it would need to come back to council for approval. But certainly, this is not the final product by any stretch of the imagination. We continue to look at other opportunities to explore our fee structure. Does it make sense? Should, where could we improve it, et cetera? And I am quite confident we will be coming back to council with further amendments to it. What you have before you with this evening is those amendments that were necessary to satisfy our sustainability items as part of our sustainability plan. But it's not the end. Continuous improvement will continue, and we will be back to council.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't think I saw any other hands up or, so I'll call the question on the, motion on summary. All those in favor? Thank you, and anyone contrary-minded? Okay, not hearing any, common clerk?
So this bylaw is entitled "The Bylaw Respecting Fees for the Fire Protection Services in the City of St. John." And the bylaw would repeal and replace bylaw number LG9, which is bylaw respecting fees for fire protection services in St. John. The amendment of the city's fees for protection services bylaw includes fees for select emergency responses. The new version of the bylaw includes fees for non-resident motor vehicle accidents, nuisance false alarms, thrill-seeking activities, and violations in recreational burning.
Thank you, and by title, was it, common clerk?
Yes, please.
By title, thank you, Deputy, and seconded by Counselor Sullivan, again, thank you. And I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you, and anyone contrary-minded? Not hearing or seeing anyone, motions carried, thank you. Next item?
I just have to read the title of that one, your worship.
Oh, excuse me, I apologize.
Okay. A bylaw respecting fees for fire protection services in the City of St. John. And next item on the agenda is another bylaw. This one would be for first and second reading. And this bylaw is the Business Improvement Levy Bylaw Amendment. And as councils are aware, Ms. Tissington was just here presenting on the BIA. But council will recall that on October 26th, the Uptown St. John Corporation submitted the proposed 2021 BIA budget. And that budget kept the same rate of 16 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value on property in the uptown area. And the process requires that the Clerk's Office places an ad in the newspaper that outlines the budget and provides an opportunity for objections to be submitted to the Clerk's Office. So that process is now complete. Due to the cancellation of the last council meeting, it has just bumped it ahead. So it's anticipated that on December 7th, the budget will be available for council's approval, and the process will have been completed. And so for tonight, the requirement would just be for first and second reading of the bylaw. And the whole process would be complete next council meeting after the budget is passed and third reading is given. So simply a motion for first and second reading would be appropriate tonight.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Merrithew, thank you. And on the question, we'll call the question, oh, sorry, did you, sorry, you're just voting? Okay, thank you. On the question, sorry, all those in favor? Thank you, and anyone contrary-minded? Okay, not seeing or hearing anyone, that's a unanimous vote, thank you. The motion's carried. The motion's carried.
A law to amend, bylaw number BIA2, Business Improvement Levy Bylaw.
Yep, thank you, sorry, deputy, and seconded by Councilor Reardon, thank you. And on the question, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Thank you. Thank you. And anyone contrary minded? Not seeing any. Thank you. Okay, motion is carried. Thanks.
A law to amend, bylaw number BIA2, Business Improvement Levy Bylaw.
I'm just chuckling at myself, clerk, because no matter how many meetings you've had, somehow I thought in my head you just combined first and second reading into one motion, so, although I know we can't do that, so thank you. Okay, next item, please.
So 11.1 is a submission from Mayor Darling on AIM Recycling Facility.
Okay, thanks for me, I'll just read the background, and if somebody can put this on the floor, I'll read the motion. So, "The city of St. John, on behalf of its residents, continues to have concerns with respect to AIM's recycling's ability to comply with their provincial operating license. Of particular concern is the severity and frequency of recent explosion events in close proximity to a number of uptown and westside residential and commercial neighborhoods and key tourism assets. Our concerns regarding the AIM recycling facility in St. John are premised on two key council priorities: vibrant, safe, vibrant, safe city and growth and prosperity. It is essential that we do everything possible to ensure that St. John is recognized by its residents and citizens as a positive place to live, work, and play. Our ability to grow our community and attract new people and investment requires a healthy coexistence between unique, livable neighborhoods that coexist with commercial industrial activities. Unfortunately, we do not currently have a healthy coexistence with disruptive, heavy industrial activities and explosion events taking place within the heart of our city and inner harbor. Recognizing that the city of St. John has absolutely no regulatory or land use planning authority with respect to the AIM facility and Port St. John operations in general, AIM's presence within the city's urban core impacts the overall sustainability and livability of our uptown and inner harbor neighborhoods, one of our region's key emerging growth catalysts. The status and operation of the AIM facility also continues to be a key area of focus and discussion and concern with developers and investors that are working with the city and develop St. John with respect to a range of uptown and inner harbor property and real estate development projects." Sorry, I know I did that wrong, I should have probably just asked if somebody wanted to move the motion. Councilor Hickey, thank you, do I have a seconder for that? Councilor Norton, thanks. I'll just, maybe just continue for a moment, I'll read the motion. "That a letter be sent to the appropriate minister copying all area MLAs or ministers. The Member of Parliament, Wayne Long, the appropriate federal minister, the Port St. John CEO and Board Chair, calling on the provincial and federal governments to ensure enforcement is happening on all aspects of the AIM facility approval to operate. In particular, as it relates to the requirements to have all raw materials shipped in with accelerants removed, and that AIM is required to inspect all raw materials to ensure accelerants are removed, clause 56 and 57 of the approval to operate. If this were happening, in my opinion, there would be no explosions. That the definition of an explosion being greater than 104 decibels be reviewed, and furthermore, that the province of New Brunswick strongly considers all options available to them to ensure compliance, including meaningful fines, 24-hour shutdowns for each explosion event, and infraction of the operating license." Just a little bit more context, council, and then we'll open it up. I do want to thank, so I'm hopeful that council will support this tonight, that we'll get the letter off, but I do want council and the community and the members of the media to know that I have had multiple conversations late in the week, over the weekend, and in fact, I just learned from the minister that there was yet again another explosion event. And I will read council and the community, the minister's response. "I'm very concerned about the repeated explosions at the AIM recycling in St. John. I, along with my cabinet colleagues, have had a number of conversations with the mayor, this is true, and the port of St. John regarding the operation. The Department of Environment and Climate Change is closely monitoring compliance with the approval to operate, including today, when the operation was forced to cease because of an explosion that exceeded their approval limits, and we had an inspector on site today and will again tomorrow. As minister in the department, if the department identifies that standards within the approval to operate are not being followed, I can and will exercise the appropriate authorities," and that's from the Honorable Gary Crosman, Minister of the Environment and Climate Change. "So during this meeting, I learned that they had been shut down, and really what we're asking for in summary, council, is that, you know, the federal government through the port and through its jurisdiction, the provincial government, bring back and restore balance, not anti-industry, not trying to put anyone out of the job, but simply trying to have a conditions present where we can thrive and grow, and people can live in coexistence with industry. So thanks for giving me an extra minute or two, and ask if there's any questions or comments. Thank you, Councilor Hickey, go ahead."
Thank you, your worship, and I just have a couple comments myself. I will be supporting the motion. Thank you for bringing it forward. It's been one that has been on our minds for a long time, and a conversation that I think we as a community have had at great length, and one that I would like to finally find some level of peaceful coexistence as a solution to this, of which I think we can all get on board with. I think I would just preface things in saying that I don't think a motion like this provides any security risks or puts into jeopardy any jobs in St. John. I don't think that it brings into question any levels of the presence of industry and whether or not that's positive or negative, but what I think this says is that the attitude that is coming from AIM and the clear disregard and lack of consideration for the legislation and for the rules that have been put in place specific to their facility are not being held to a standard, are not being held to any regard, and I think that falls to all of the representatives that will receive this letter. And I think further what it says to St. Johners and to a narrative on the industrial presence in St. John is that we deserve better, that we can't sit by and allow this kind of attitude and this kind of complete disregard for the authority of both this council, of our provincial government, and of our federal government to take place by industry. And I think it's totally unacceptable. I think the, you know, and I doubt that this would necessarily be shared by the rest of the council, but perhaps it is, but I think the bullish attitude of specifically the CEO of AIM towards both members of this council, our mayor, our premier, and our federal authorities, I think is apprehensible and should no longer be tolerated. I'm tired of having to come back to the same conversation about people breaking the rules, and then turn not having the provincial authorities and the federal authorities be able to have our backs and make sure that they're backed up by ensuring that we're following the rules. We're not asking for new legislation here. We're not asking for a new narrative to be set in the context of AIM. What we are specifically asking for is that the facility follow the rules that were set forth when they took their place on the port 150 yards away from residential space. You know, I would say, I would just offer a personal anecdote quickly. You know, I had, I work in Hilliard Place, and I had a newer employee rush into my office the other day and said, "I think a car just hit the building." I said, "Nope, that was AIM." And that's the standard that we have been stuck with, and it's one that cannot be accepted any longer. That's why I think this motion is a home run. I wish we had a bigger tool belt in dealing with this, but I think we need to really depend on our provincial authorities and our federal authorities to have the backbone to be able to stand up to, to be able to stand up at AIM and make sure that they are following their rules.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all for me.
Thank you, Councilor McKenzie.
Thank you, worship. You know, it's kind of too bad that we've got a situation where we've got a square peg and we're trying to fit it in a round hole. I mean, the port is no place for a facility like that, and we're trying to make rules, we're trying to accommodate it, and I don't care if it's 103 decibels. You know, it's still noisy, and it still gives off shockwaves in an uptown area in the north end here. I don't want to see anybody lose their job, but I mean, it's misplaced. It belongs in an industrial park, and I think we're the only harbor in the world that has one on its harbor front. So, I mean, I support the letter, I think that, you know, they have to do better, but really and honestly, it's just misplaced. It shouldn't even be there, because we're trying to make regulations and do things to accommodate it, and it just doesn't belong in that area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did I, I don't see any other hands, anyone else? Oh, Councilor Reardon, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. I would echo everything that Councilor Hickey has said. I feel that frustration myself, because for the nine years I've been on council, I get calls about that all the time, but I have no tools in my tool chest to deal with it. It's private property, I can't even get a hold of the lease. So, you know, I'm relying on someone else to enforce the legislation and the rules that they've set for it. So we need the letter, we need some action. The uptown area has been growing, but I mean, this is a real stumbling block for us, and for the lower west side, which is an adorable little niche neighborhood. But to be living next door to that, it creates so much dirt and dust, so, and we don't really know what's going on over there. So thank you so much for the letter, supported 100%. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so just to wrap it up, I don't see any other hands, so just wrap, and just turn back around. I, so this is something that we've been dealing with as a council since 2016, and certainly something that I, someone said to me on the weekend, "You've put your chin out there." It's not about putting my chin out, it's about doing what's right for our community overall. I looked back at our letter of 2019 May, council, and we talked about the location, Councilor McKenzie. We talked about the operating license, and that it shouldn't be renewed without input from the city and citizens. We talked about environmental performance, we talked about the fire department and risk assessments, and, you know, how often the fire department is involved there. We, you know, we talked about a number of these elements that are still not resolved, and I just want to, I think the spirit of what you said, Councilor Hickey, I agree, but I would slightly nuance that we are in fact asking the provincial and federal governments to put new rules in place. We're asking them to consider every single tool that they have to, to bring balance to this organization in particular, and you're right, if, I do have a call tomorrow with AIM, no problem chatting with the organization, but they also need to be responsive to the community. And every time there's an event, simply saying no comment is not acceptable. And lastly, I would say, just so council realizes, I had conversation on the weekend with the city of Hamilton and citizens in the city of Hamilton, who are going through their own challenges with dust, explosions, and the very same issue here, so we're not alone. So, okay, well, thank you very much, I'll call the question then, all those in favor? Thank you, and anyone contrary minded? Okay, I don't think I heard anyone, thank you for that support, council. Next item, common clerk? And I've got to give a shout out to the most tech savvy counselor tonight, Councilor Norton, who figured out how to, I think, is that Dominion Park, counselor? Not sure how you did that, but that's very good. Okay.
Just keeping Dominion Park front and center here.
There you go, counselor, well done. Common clerk, next item?
12.1 is an update from the city manager.
Okay, thank you, city manager.
Your worship, members of council, this is the standard or city manager's update that we are providing at every council meeting from now on. As you are aware, the city of St. John continues to work on all of its delivery of services and its long-term plans and strategic goals through the delivery of services, but also through working on transformational reforms and other aspects of our sustaining St. John three-part plan and our own internal sustainability plan. In addition to that, we are also dealing with two emergency situations simultaneously. For those reasons, we have our emergency operations center activated, and it is acting as the controlling or coordination agency for those two emergency situations. And I'm, of course, referring to COVID-19 in the first case and the cyber attack in the second case. On COVID-19, council in this community is well aware at this point that we are in the orange phase because of the outbreaks that have occurred within the St. John region. From a service perspective, I am very happy to report that there has been no significant change to our essential services because of COVID-19 and the escalation to orange. In other words, everything from police and fire response to solid waste management, to transit, et cetera, continue to operate for all intent and purpose in the same manner as they did during the yellow phase. That said, there have been some impacts, most notably within our sports and recreation facilities, whereby we have been limited of those facilities and some other restrictions to our overall operating plans. But overall, our sports and recreational facilities remain open with those adjusted operating plans. The other area where we have seen some changes is in our gatherings required for governance at the municipal level. In that meetings such as the PAC and the Heritage Board have had to delay their meetings while we are in the orange phase, and if the orange phase continues, then those various meetings will transition into a virtual format moving forward if necessary. Clearly, there are other impacts to the community because of orange phase, but they are not directly as a result of any change to city services. On the cyber front, I will remind council that we noticed malicious activity on our networks the afternoon of the 13th of November, some two weeks ago. We took some immediate actions to isolate our networks from the outside world and to contain and then eradicate the virus. As part of our restoration efforts, we will not, I'll say again, we will not reactivate any of our networks or reconnect to the outside world until we are sure that it is safe to do so. We do not want to be the, we do not want to cause any further spread of the virus to our external stakeholders and partners. I must also mention that we continue to be asked when we will provide details on the attack. First, it is important to note that there is an ongoing police investigation that limits what we can share, but equally important, we will not provide details that inform the criminals who attacked us on their effectiveness or lack thereof, nor will we comment on our strengths or limited vulnerabilities, since we have no intention to provide a roadmap to any future attackers or scammers. This is a very common practice by anyone in the private or public sector that experiences any sort of cyber attack in terms of protecting their assets moving forward. What we will do is provide the information that is important to our community, such as any impacts on our services, or if we confirm any compromise of personal identifying equipment such as bank accounts, numbers, credit card statements, or social insurance numbers. On that point, we do not, at this time, have any confirmation that personal information was accessed or transferred from the virus. Making a final determination on this matter continues to be a priority for us. We know that we had stored very little of that sort of information on our networks, and we are doing the forensics to make the final determination. As soon as we know more, we will notify the community immediately. The city also wishes to emphasize that most of our services remain fully operational. This includes our police and fire response, including dispatch, our entire solid waste management system, which includes garbage and compost, our emergency public works repairs to deal with water main ruptures, faulty traffic lights, et cetera, our usual our usual road and sidewalk maintenance, our winter storm management, our stormwater management, all of our parks and recreation services, and our customer service mainline are all operational. There are other aspects as well. We have produced an, an update as of last Friday and that update can be found on our website. Of note, we have had to adjust our payment options because we have shut down our networks and they will remain shut down until it is safe to reopen them. And we have also had to create a temporary website in order to keep the public informed. Finally, despite the COVID and cyber attacks, we do remain focused on the remainder of our 2020 work plan. And I am happy to report to council that we remain on track for that work plan with only minor adjustments. And we are in the process right now of developing our 2021 work plan based on what we know must get done, addressing, uh, aspects such as the Ernst &amp; Young operational audit and other considerations to drive the sustainability and long-term viability of the city as we move forward. Subject to questions, your worship, that concludes the briefing for this evening.
Okay, thank you, councillor, uh, Mayorithew. Nope. You were me, you, you had yourself unmuted, council?
I did. Thank, thank, uh, mister, uh, mister mayor. Um, city manager, you noted that, um, barriers in meeting with the PAC and so on. Can you tell me where we're at in the growth side of the business with, uh, issuance of building permits and inspections and so that, that, that business can go ahead, please?
Uh, your worship, through you to the councillor. Thanks very much for the question. I should have mentioned it. In fact, it was in my notes and I skipped over it. Uh, we, we were blessed at the beginning of COVID-19 because we had a digitized system that allowed us to continue with building permits even though COVID-19 struck. Uh, but of course, a digitized service is affected when you shut down your systems. I'm happy to report that as of today, we have in place a manual, uh, process whereby building permits can be processed, both new ones and existing ones. And, uh, what we are simply asking anybody who wishes a building permit or wishes a status update on their building permit to contact our customer service center and they will be provided the information to move forward. And there was a news release today, uh, and it is posted on our website with some additional detail.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can I just have a receive and file then, please, council? Uh, deputy, seconded by councillor McKenzie. Thank you. And, uh, on the question, all those in favor? Thank you. And anyone contrary minded? Not seeing any. Thank you. Next item, come clerk.
Item 15.1, your worship, is, uh, United Way Request to Present and the recommendation is to refer to the clerk to schedule.
Okay, thank, thank you. Moved by councillor, uh, McKenzie. Thank you. And seconded by councillor Casey. Thank you very much. Uh, look forward to that presentation, actually. Um, okay, on the question, all those in favor? Thank you. And anyone contrary minded? Okay, the motion's carried. Thank you. Next item.
And, uh, your worship, the final item came from committee of the whole. It's 17.1 on the agenda. And, uh, this is a resolution to retain, uh, Tories for legal services in relation to St. John Energy and Birch Hill Wind Project.
Okay, thank you. Moved by, uh, councillor Reardon. Thank you. Seconded by councillor Sullivan. Thanks for that. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you. And anyone contrary minded? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you very much. And, uh, that was it, come clerk?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Just want to say thanks again. Uh, you know, um, anyway, just thanks for everything that our city staff are doing. Thanks to council, uh, and, uh, and it is a bit of a challenging time for a lot of St. Johners out there. So keep your chin up and, uh, and we are resilient and let's continue to fight through orange, get back to, you know, yellow, get our vaccines in the new year and, uh, hopefully, uh, put COVID behind us. So thanks everyone very much. A motion to adjourn, please, council? Thank you, councillor, uh, McKenzie. Seconded by councillor Norton. Thank you. On the question, all those in favor? Thank you. Anyone contrary minded? Thanks very much and we'll see you soon, folks. Thank you.